Okay, let me call the order. Let me know that this is a hybrid meeting.
This is our first one?
Yeah, so we're breaking ground here. So also present and to those in physical attendance are Don Schofield and Paul Stoll is our planner who's promoting also Tom Curry are a member. And then I'll be seating. Well, are you an alternate?
No.
You can see done.
No, okay. So Don will be seated in lieu of Bob Powell, who's not here. He indicated he wouldn't be at the meeting this evening. Okay. Any change? I'll make a motion that we make a change to the agenda, adding an item seven point two. Uh, let's see. For the the agenda for this evening, the Columbia Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm sorry, who's that?
They're muted now.
That item seven point two US Solar Corporation for preliminary discussion concerning the construction of a solar facility at four sixty eight, maybe seven. Please discuss second. Okay, Rich, any discussion? All those in favor? I. And I members remotely. Your vote? Affirmative, Tom?
Aye, sorry.
Okay. Nays, none, abstentions. Okay, Mr. Tabor is going to abstain. Okay, so the the. Right down seven point two, so I. Bring that up. Minutes of the meeting of September twenty second, twenty six, twenty twenty two, I'll make the motion, any changes or corrections? I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented. Justin seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? I. Nays? None, abstention? Done? Yeah, can you unmute yourself? Could the members make sure they're they're not muted?
He muted?
I don't think he is muted.
Okay, you can give us thumbs ups or thumbs down.
If you're abstaining, you can do.
Okay. Okay. Can you just put your thumb up so we can move on, Don?
He did.
Okay.
I can I can hear you.
Okay, that was unanimous. Audience of citizens, anything anybody would like to bring up to us that isn't already on the agenda? And if you're not in the room, please put your hand up on your. Doom indicator. Okay. Unfinished business, there is none. Uh, new business, item seven point one, town of Columbia. Application to add two buildings to Route Six Public Works Facility and to modify the internal traffic flow. Map five lot three, who's going to speak to that?
I'm Jason, I'm the building official and facilities director, and I'm going to speak to this.
Thank you.
You guys have a drawing. I did get updated ones from our engineers this afternoon that shows a little change in the front facade. Um, so I don't know how it's working for visualization. Anyway, what's going on at this very moment in pink highlighted in pink up here is a thirty by fifty office building. It'll be office, a couple offices, a conference space, locker room, bathroom, and a break room. That's what we're actually intending on building right away, but I wanted to bring the whole site to you guys, because that's. Uh, show you that we've placed the building in respect to what could happen to the site in the future. So additional six day garage is indicated in yellow on here. It's on your map as well. Off to the side of this so that as the traffic comes in, as it currently does, it comes in this way. Comes in this way, salt shed is in this general vicinity. Uh, everything's open in the front, the mine slug trailer has been moved off to this corner of here. So this stays all open, easily drive in front and back in or pull forward into this new garage. If that ever happens. Another item that we wanted to address was there's two large mounds in the front of the building. So when you're driving down the road, you're looking at the building, there's two large mounds, and those mounds are there to protect a telephone pole, a utility pole, and also to protect the well. Um, that's here in the pink. Uh, we have the well here and the telephone pole over here. So we're proposing an island with vegetation, and that will hopefully make it look better and keep those two items protected um, in a in a more visually appealing way. As far as traffic, people will be able to still come in as they as they do. Uh, if they're going towards DPW, they'll go back. If they're coming in for fuel, they'll go around the island and come up for fuel. Come this way and back their buses in or pull buses in straight. I think they back in, but they would still be able to come through here, fuel up, turn and back the buses in, which bus parking is over here. We do propose maintaining parking in the front because I believe the bus drivers of park along this front section. So instead of putting one large island, which was one thought that the landscape architect had was to bring this island all the way to the front and just get rid of this as driving area. I didn't think that that was a good idea, given the fact that I think we need to park them for uh, at least the bus drivers. Currently, the DPW employees also park up here. But I'm hoping that they'll be parking in this vicinity for the moment. Right now, this building isn't there or reparking in front of the office.
Okay.
That's where we are.
Paula, any thoughts on this?
I think it's a really good plan. They've been working on it for a while. Jason's put together a very logical use of the space. Um, and it's it's a great idea to unify the front of the building with a planted area that the the side benefit is that it'll protect the well and and the utility pole from getting driven into. Um, and it'll also improve visually what the public works garage looks like from when you're driving down the road.
Okay, uh. So. Is there, what what action would they be looking for from us this evening?
Um, a site plan approval.
We don't have a simple motion for that.
No, I I'm sorry, I did not.
Okay, any questions from members of the commission? Any comments or question from members of the public? I don't see any questions or comments. Is everyone comfortable with this? Nice plan?
Yes.
The motion that we approved the plan as presented. Need a discussion? Members?
No.
Okay. All those in favor? I.
Aye.
Don, raise your hand. Okay. Thank you.
Not that we're telling you how to vote, Don.
That's unanimous. Okay, next item is item seven point two. The presentation of US Solar Corporation have a preliminary discussion about their plan for a solar farm. Okay, so just make note that Mr. Tabor is recusing himself uh, from participation in this part of our meeting.
Good evening, I'm Alan Tabor, project development with US Solar. I just wanted to give a brief presentation on the proposed community solar project that we'll be working on over the coming weeks to prepare applications for this commission. Um, this evening, just wanted to have an informational session to I present the concept and clarify a couple of outstanding questions before we kick off the whole permitting process.
Okay, before we get into this, so the question came up is whether or not this is permitted under our current regulations, and there was some interaction with our town attorney. Uh, what's your perspective on that?
That was one of my questions for y'all as well. So my read of your witness is that solar is allowed in the residential agricultural district. And it looks fairly straightforward to me that the project would be a permitted use. We would apply for building permits. Um, in conversations with your planning director, Paul Stoll, she was of the opinion that we would need to pursue a zoning textual amendment and then uh, proceed with a site plan amendment, our site plan approval after that. Um, so I was just looking for clarity from the commission about which direction is the actual correct path that we need to be pursuing. I think that's ultimately our primary issue is make sure that whichever direction we're going is is gonna hold muster so that we have a valid project.
Just so it's on the record, this is on property that is owned in part or jointly by Mr. Tabor or his wife. Um, yeah, I just want to be really clear to the public on that. So if he, there's any comment for Mr. Tabor, it's not as a member of the commission, it would be as a member of the public or a potential co applicant in the future, and I would welcome any comments from from that person in that regard. Uh, so that being said, Paula, could you go through the the perspective, I think that you you have with regard to whether or not this is permitted about primary or secondary use and so on, and I'm going to ask the applicant to also circle back to that perspective, and then we'll get into the scope of the project that you're proposing. You don't mind I'm talking to the applicant now? Or the potential applicant, Paula?
Uh, yes, the the regulations that were adopted uh, several years ago, when we started having a when solar power was getting very popular and people were putting them in their yards. We realized that we didn't have any language for it. Um, so I think it was two thousand and fourteen they were adopted. The uh, what's permitted in a residential district is solar panels as an accessory use. If the winery was putting up solar panels to electrify the barn, the 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 winery, that would be an accessory use. Um, a solar farm that's not uh, the primary designation or destination of the electricity is not the the farm building there, it's to the grid. So that means that the solar farm is not an accessory use. So it's, and I I checked with the town attorney twice on this. I checked with him when this first came up, which was a little bit over a year ago. Um, and he said because it is not permitted in a residential district, it's not listed as, then it would be prohibited. I know Mr. Tabor has a different opinion on this, but we have to stick with what the attorneys are recommending. Um, the um, it's a fairly easy, it's a fairly easy change, and um, I was ready to propose it to the commission a year ago when Walt said that that the plans were on hold and to to not do anything yet. Um, there is no harm in changing the regulations to say ground mounted mounted or or pole mounted solar panels as a primary or secondary use in any district may be approved by special permit. Um, that's a very easy change. Uh, they can couple, they can put it in their own application as as a two part step of approval. Um, it isn't changing anything. The intent of eighteen eight point fifteen D was for solar farms. Um, and I was the one that drafted the language, and I'm was thinking that a solar farm may want to go as they've done in many other towns. Um, farmers uh, can make more money off of off of solar panels than they can off a hay sometimes, or most times, I guess. Um, so farms is a farm parcel is what I was thinking of that would be becoming a potential solar farm. So when I drafted this, it would be the primary use on on the uh, on a farmland. This is not just a farmland, this is a vineyard with a business on it. So it's a very easy change.
Um, I understand, but um, I want to go back through what you just explained to me because it it I'm confused a bit by what your explanation was. Um, so it's your contention that we could allow under our current rules, but solar panels on a farm, but because there's a business that's a winery on here that we you don't feel that this would be allowed. Is that what you're saying?
Because of the accessory use, it's not a an accessory. If he, if the property were subdivided and the back portion were was did not have the the winery on it, then it would be the primaries of that property. That's another avenues. You can subdivide the property out, which probably would be a free split.
Let let me be clear about what it is that you're saying, Paula. So you're saying that it's your perspective and the way.
And the town attorneys.
So what you're saying is that because the winery is there, it was your perspective, and it's now supported by the town attorney that this would not be allowed, but if this was the only thing that was there and the winery wasn't there, that this would be allowed?
Correct.
Yeah, that's completely hogwash to me. Any other thoughts?
My question is, if you have a piece of property with two activities on it, a winery and a solar farm, how do you determine which is the primary and which is the secondary? There has to be some metric to determine that. So how do we determine that?
Well, but you can only have a solar farm on a as a primary according to our regulations in the residential district. So it's just, I don't, it's an easy fix. I don't know why we've spent over a year fighting over an easy fix.
I I I really wish you wouldn't characterize this as fighting. I don't think there was any fighting that went on.
There's been intense disagreement that I have heard over the last, especially last summer.
I I would, I would appreciate if you don't characterize anything in that in that way, Rich.
Okay.
So looking at in layman's terms, I see accessory use as if you have a home, a farm, whatever it is, that accessory use in a solar panels instance is to power your home, your business, whatever is legally there. Now, if this is a solar farm, that's going to also be sold and to power other people's houses. To me, that's almost a business entity of its own. You know, so that, so that's where that's where my gray area comes in. I had no problem with putting a solar panel on to run anything you want to run on your property because that's accessory use. You follow my train of thought on that?
I do. The question is that what Justin brought up here is um, what if all of a sudden the winery became an accessory used to the 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 solar?
Well, yeah, that's that's what I mean.
We would allow the solar panels here if there was no winery. So what if they went to go, wanted to build the winery after the solar panels were installed? I can't imagine we would withhold that permission.
Yeah, then you'd be opening up a solar business, for lack of better words, to sell to other people off the property.
But that's that's what would have been allowed there anyway if the winery wasn't there.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, accessory use to the property, which is your home, you use it to power. And if I go put solar panels on my property, it's going to run my house.
So we do.
Run my neighbor's house.
We do allow it as an accessory use, but also we allow it the solar panels as a primary use. So if the applicant just came forward and said, well, that's now the primary use of the property, but we also have a winery there. Why wouldn't it be allowed under that perspective?
Is 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 a solar, is a winery, a traditional accessory for a solar farm? No, an accessory by the definition of an accessory from a zoning perspective, from zoning like regulations, the definition is customary to the primary use.
Okay, um, Mr. Tabor, I'm gonna, you'd like to speak to this?
Um, what what do we really come down to is the definition of accessory? Um, because in this case, we're we're going by Paul Stoll's definition of accessory. And and I've researched this with other towns. Um, I could come up with the names of the towns, the commission, whatever, if you like, but um, several other towns look at primary and accessory use as being the primary and a secondary use. In other words, once a primary use on a parcel is established, and that is the winery, anything subordinate to that becomes the accessory use, whether it's a cattle operation or it's a, it doesn't mean that the cattle operation is for the homeowner because it's on the same property, but the fact that there's a cattle operation is agricultural, it's permitted use. But it is secondary or accessory to the residents that was already on the property. Um, and then and then there's the the other question is, I I keep hearing that unless it's hooked up to the building, it's not considered the accessory accessory to it. Well, essentially, a system this large wouldn't wouldn't directly power any one building. I'm not unlike the mall in Manchester. They have a solar system there that's that's built as an accessory to the mall. But it's not directly powering the mall that goes into the grid and then it comes back to the mall, not unlike this. This a one meg system, two meg system, three meg system. They're designed and built to power the grid, and then the grid services the the other buildings, whether it's my my building or the house next door, and the house next door to that, and the house next door to that. But it comes back to me through the grid. Um, it's really a matter of definition of accessory. Whether it is asked to be hooked up. And that, by the way, is not in our definitions of our rest. An accessory means hook.
Okay, part of where I was going to go, you turned it back over to me, is that that definition of an accessory use doesn't appear in the solar section. I didn't notice it elsewhere in the in the ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Uh, so with that said, why don't you go through what you plan to pursue on the property? And if you could, I've heard some mention in past meetings about the differentiation between sizes of systems and what size systems trigger. Basically, our inability to review it because it's a citing council issue and what threshold they they look at that. Uh, and if anyone has questions about citing counsel and what their authority is, we can address that. Uh, so let me turn it back over to the presenter.
Sure, thank you. Uh, so this will be a one megawatt community solar facility, and you're connecting through EverSource. Uh, because it's one megawatt, uh, it does not go to the citing council. Projects that are over one megawatt go to citing council for approval. Uh, so we have a number of other projects in Connecticut that will be filing citing council later this year, early next year. Um, but this one due size only is reviewed by the local municipality. This uh, project has gone through the competitive bidding process with EverSource uh, in the SCAP programs of the shared community facility. Uh, that is a renewable resources RFP that's run annually. Uh, administered by Pura. So after EverSource awards is based on pricing and other factors. Uh, Pura goes and reviews those tenders to make sure that we are proposing uh, high quality projects that are going to deliver value to EverSource customers and repairs. Uh, because it's a shared community.
Just for clarification, now you don't represent EverSource. You represent an independent company that will be installing the solar panels and and selling money electricity.
Yes, so US Solar will be the owner developer, uh, and will also construct and operate the facility. Uh, we'll be selling the tower to EverSource, and then EverSource's customers.
For the record, uh, Mrs. Schofield is at the meeting now physically.
Couldn't figure out what was wrong.
Okay.
So we'll be selling the tower through our contract with EverSource. Uh, it goes into the utility grid, and then EverSource customers can subscribe for the total output of the project based against their residential or small business needs.
Okay.
Uh, the project has also gone through the interconnection approval process with EverSource, so we have completed studies. Uh, and we actually just recently received the agreement from the utility to interconnect the facility. Um, we have a couple of questions about just minor equipment details, but nothing that would hold up the ability to interconnect the project with the grid. Um, our award as part of the SCAP program and our interconnection agreement with EverSource require that we have a project operational beginning of twenty twenty four. So our goal is to work with uh, your community on the approval process through the early part of next year with hopes of breaking ground uh, spring, early summer of next year so that we can construct across the summer, uh, do all the final utility testing so that we can be operational by end of next year, very beginning of twenty twenty four.
Project will be just shy of one megawatt?
Yes.
And so just for perspective, it's not a zoning question, you don't have to answer it, but one one megawatt, what is that enough electricity to power a hundred homes typically on a typical day?
Several hundred homes, I can come back with a more precise answer.
Yeah, I don't need that. I'm just trying to get a perspective on.
Um, but the site uh, is ideally suited for a solar project of this size. Set back over twenty five hundred feet from the public way around eighty seven. Uh, there's a substantial wooded hillside that blocks all public views uh, from route eighty seven into the array area. There are a number of private residences that are around the perimeter of the property. I was walking in this afternoon and noticed that uh, the Woody buffer that's there largely occupied on Tabor property. Provides pretty substantial buffer between those residences and the field where the array would go. But we're not proposing to remove any of those trees so that Woody buffer would be in place. There would be a minimum fifty foot setback from the array to the property line, uh, which we've shown on the drawing here. And we have a pretty good uh, distance there for any potential labor issues in the array area. Uh, it's also on a hillside that for the most part is above the sidelines from those residences on that tree line. Sure, when you walk along this tree line here, you can see that the level of the field and where you're standing is actually looking pretty closely in with the roof line of several of those residences. So any views from those properties up into the array would be mitigated by the pockery as well.
What what's the cost of the scope of a project like this ballpark?
It can be a couple of million dollars by the time you've procured all of the equipment. Uh, spent the money on the surveys, development, engineering, network, um, and all the permitting fees.
So potentially, the scope of this project is larger than probably the scope of developing the the winery. Um, and that as a winery, um, maybe. So this would be a bigger project than the winery itself, so that this would. I don't know.
Winery costs to install, but.
Is that something that you want to know?
I know, I didn't, not, no, I just, you know, the 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 conversation that that.
You're trying to now justify the primary versus.
I'm I'm just trying to analyze it, not justify it, just trying to understand. Yeah, I mean, so so. I mean, yeah.
Well, it would be primary. Dollar for dollar, but the other thing is we're sharing access. We're sharing roadways. It's this isn't a new the plowing and new roads and, you know, making new accesses. There's no raxis.
One of my questions is why isn't the access from Odet Circle?
We had initially actually purchased a strip, you know, those from and and I should say too, this is Walt Tabor for the record, right? And uh, the access strip is by a hundred twenty five feet line that comes down from the upper field to Bodat Terrace, and there are, there is also.
And there are, there is also three-phase power on double J road, which is another potential access. When the study was done, buying and for US Solar. There was a determination made that we had originally been talking about a three-meg system here. And that was what the original intention was, so the field would be about roughly three times the size of what's here. But because of the aging infrastructure that CLMP had as well as some inadequate substation in the area. CLMP didn't feel that their system would handle a three-meg system. So we had it come back to one meg, if I'm correct.
Right, so the utility upgrades would have been prohibitive for a size project to pair, essentially would cost more to upgrade the grid than it would to install a project. So we were revaluing utility at a downsized project size determined that one megawatt could move forward, we compared those upgrade costs.
Would that go out through Bodat Terrace and connect to Double Bay?
No, the utility interconnection is going to be at the entrance of the Hearthstone wire.
I'm in a butter, so I ha- I have a bunch of questions about that.
Sure.
I just don't understand why it would be more cost-effective to go up two thousand twenty-five hundred feet of road and and I assume underground. Is it underground?
There would be an underground wire within the array area itself, but then we'll have a riser pole outside of the fence.
And then there will be a rough, there will be a overground, above ground, all the way down past the winery, connecting on.
That's the current proposal, actually, let me confirm. That's, I think we just have, it just says MB. We don't actually show O E or U G. I can confirm again with that, we do have a riser pole absolutely near the entrance of the wiring, so you'll have to have three project-owned poles leading up to the resource pole here.
Was the three-phase wiring on Route eighty-seven good enough to handle the extra MB, I assume the three-phase interface down in Double Bay does not?
Right, so when we looked at it with the utility, we determined that the wires that are on Route eighty-seven are more favorable for the project than what was on the other side. The other piece of it is that that strip of land that connects down to Double Day was so steep that our civil engineer determined that it would have been infeasible for construction access.
I would contend that it's just the steep going down the road that you're gonna use. It's it's twice the elevation.
I haven't been down the the Double Day side, I did drive up the existing road today, there's definitely a section of it that is steep. But from the engineering perspective, they determined that was.
From the ascent perspective, I'm I'm not happy with the over of a buck around wiring coming down, all the way down the property.
And where is your property located?
Across the street.
Yeah, Don, if you feel this is a conflict, you might want to recuse yourself.
Wondering if that's.
Yeah, you know, I I it's it's your call, we never would second guess your.
Well, no, because I'm in favor of solar, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna just, well, Taber.
Well, yeah.
I'm gonna say that, well, the over, if it if the plan for overhead was to go through the winery, I want the project. I'm gonna tell you that right now, it's my project, it's my property. It ain't gonna happen if it's overhead, it has never been proposed to me as overhead.
Okay.
And I do not want it, so it will not be over.
Okay, appreciate that.
I will add as a comment that we do these projects nationwide, we work with other concerns on all our projects. So if overhead wiring became, uh, you know, if it's gonna stop the project, then of course we'd work with you to make sure that whatever is gonna fit within your community standards is something that we adopt and design.
Okay.
And again, this evening, I'm not presuming a permissible project, this is clearly a concept plan, it doesn't have all the details baked in.
I think the most important question for us to address is, is there a need for a zoning change? And may- maybe, maybe we do, maybe we don't, but I think that's a discussion to have, and I would like to start that. At least start a discussion about that, the questions everyone has brought up, I would like to make sure that we address them, we don't gloss over any of them. Any perspective from our town attorney? He's not a member of the commission, I respect him greatly, very learned, but we don't necessarily always have to agree with the town attorney, you know, ultimately. We, I think we should come to a an informed perspective based on combination of outside input, staff input, but also our own perspective on the regulations ultimately. I think it's up to us to determine, and another question is if if we're all gray about that, let's, we'll have a discussion, so we we know how the all the members of the commission feel. And then come up, you know, I'm sure we'll form a consensus quickly, whether or not we can if there were a potential application of this scope on on that particular property presented. Would we need a a zone change, or do we feel that in spite of what the advice is at this point, after reviewing very thoroughly our our council's advice, whether we we feel that we don't need a regulation change and it really does fit within the scope of what our regulations state that that we're comfortable about? It's a critical question, I want to discuss it, make sure we've discussed it at length. If a regulation change were proposed, we're looking at two to three months to get that done, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, even if it were written and proposed, you know, it's gonna take so much time to schedule a public hearing. And and then have the public hearing and then take action at the bare minimum. If we had a a a proposed regulation change this evening, which we don't, it's gonna be at least two months based on the normal timeframe of things.
The the applicant can submit it at the same time, and then it would be the same same process.
Hold on a moment, Paul. So that being said, I think the critical question is, do we feel that a regulation change is necessary? Because I'm not convinced that it is, but if it in fact we come up with that perspective, then we can approach that and suggest it in parallel with the application.
Well, I think I would agree with Paula on this, I don't know if a megawatt installation of solar panel would be an accessory use to the wire. It seems doesn't seem proportional.
Uh, that's if if you follow the the, well, okay, I'm listening.
Yeah.
All right.
I, to me, it's a it's a gray area, the problem that we run into is, this is my own personal opinion, is that the more words we put in, the more chance there is of interpretation different ways. So I'm all for whatever, if we if we focus on this, and there needs to be a a change to make things easier moving forward, I'm for that. Up until the point of is it even necessary to put in primary and secondary use? Could it say ground mounted or full-mounted solar panels may be approved by special permit in accordance with provision provisions in section fifty-two? I interpret it as, you know, and I remember the first instance of this coming in front of us, I was like I don't really know if I agree with that interpretation, that it's not allowed. But if there's an opportunity to make regulations simpler, easier to understand, and subject to less interpretation, I'm for that as well.
So if if.
And I'll offer that, we're not opposed to going in the right direction, we need to go. At the end of the day, our goal is to make sure that, should the town approve the project, that our approval is valid and that we can move forward with construction, as well as put down substantial equipment deposits to buy all of these modules. Plan for construction, if we did something that wasn't proper according to your regulations and then another butter came up and challenged the project, then we're in a real difficult situation schedule-wise and approval-wise, we don't want to be in that position, we want to make sure that we're working with you and your community to get something that is a full approval.
So let me ask Mr. Taber a question, you seem opposed to needing a regulation change. And that may in fact be an accurate thing, but what's the harm in pursuing that direction so that it's ironclad?
What's.
So no one can, okay?
I I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it, I I think I, my my feelings are more aligned with with Justin was saying, is is it necessary, or do we have what we needed in regulations already? I think that there's a provision in here that's that regardless of, and and by me, by my opinion, regardless of primary or or accessory use that that we have section D that says ground mounted or full-mounted panels as a primary use, any district can be. It's, we never, I'm not a party to writing these regulations, I know Paula physically wrote them, and that's the way we do things, but Don, you were a party to it, you know? Tom, you were a party to it, Rick, you were a party to it. And when we did this, we never intended that we would exclude a field. Mind you, this is a field that's not a three-meg field that we would lose control of, this is a one-meg field, it's something that is kind of in between what is done by the citing council and what we are able to control within the town. It's been designed and and planned well up and beyond any site by anybody. It was intended that it be non-intrusive, not be a problem for anybody. And it was a way to keep a good-sized parcel of of farmland as well as open space land in that fashion. The other options that exist are road goes up and and there's a cul-de-sac and houses going there, that's all permitted by our regulations. I I don't see that. This is gonna be so that the next generation can decide what to do with this. US Solar folks, they're gonna use it for twenty years, thirty years, whatever it happens to turn out to be, and then my successors are gonna decide what they do with it. My, so my point is that I disagree about regulation change, if you feel regulation change is important. Fine, I just think that many times what we do is we get caught up in, and and I can tell you, in the several years that I've been involved with this commission, we keep getting caught up in these little tiny, I would say, I'm gonna be a stinker, I'm gonna say that Paul Stahl snags. And these are Paul Stahl snags, mean, well, let's stop right there, let's rewrite it, let's hold up the applicant while we rewrite a reg. Let's hold up the applicant while we write a new reg, and and it's, I could tell you, I think it's absurd.
I think regulation change for clarification would be good.
I I'm I don't disagree with you, Don, I don't disagree with you, I just, sometimes it's necessary, and sometimes it's not, I think there's enough here that it could be viewed in one of three different ways and not.
I look at it, if you had a twenty-five kilowatt field up there that was accessory use and you're powering a winery, that would make sense.
Yeah, but it's not ours if that happens.
Huh?
It's not ours if that happens, if you put it to this, a field that large up there. Oh, I gotcha.
Just for use for the farm.
Right, right.
Just for the winery, that to me would be accessory use and to me it would be allowed.
Yeah.
A megawatt doesn't sound to me like it's it's accessory use, it sounds like it's a primary use, and I think the regulations should be specific.
But we never, again, my point is, we wrote this reg. We never, no one ever said, no one ever intended that, well, if if it's a second use that's considered a primary, and again, it's who's being in this primary accessory, that is, that's not valid. It's never intended that we disallow.
That's. I'm gonna give the floor to Mr. just Paula.
So I think what happened to that voice before is when you try to, excuse me, micromanage every little detail that puts us in these little boxes, so my thought on this should be this is private as a homeowner, yes, we should allow solar use. If it's a commercial endeavor, that should be a separate entity, do we want to allow commercial endeavors? And that's a simple yes or no on either side, so.
I think, but Rich, I think the distinction here is, if there was no winery there, it would be allowed by special permit.
Getting that is, as a as a private landowner, if him, you want to use it for that the solar panel would become a private use for that property. If it's commercial use for that property, it's a whole different thing, because the next person down, there's other farms, they may want to just convert their farmland or a chunk of it to solar panels.
Well, they're they're allowed to.
Obviously, commercial use.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, well, it was simplified, if you had a commercial use, then we could have said here, yes. We want to go environmentally, we want to do have solar farms available, yes, we'll do commercial as special permit, and then the private stuff we allow, which is pretty easy, we just go.
Yeah, but I think the the distinction here is that we already in this current regulation allow a solar farm of this scope to be on residential land.
Then, and there should be, of this scope, there should be no problem with him doing that, that's his property to do with, what he wants, and that's where I stand. As long as, as long as the surrounding neighbors aren't affected.
This is commercial in a in an RA zone, no?
No, no, that's not the point here, Don, the the point is the distinction, and Paula, please correct me if I'm stating something that's not correct about your perspective on this. If there was no winery there, this is according to our current regulations a permitted use of the property by special permit, okay? It's already, it's already there.
I've got.
No, no, let, hear me out. So this is already permitted under our regulations by by special permit, okay? This winery is, fo- farm winery is permitted by by special permit for our regulations. The two of them at the same time is what the interpretation that Paula came up with was that are not permitted at the same time on the same property.
Doesn't say that, so therefore, I think you should be able to.
And that's what I I question, is like, how can you say that this one's permitted and this one, but you put them together, one now becomes not allowing the other to be used, that that I don't understand, and I think it boils down to something is is basic, that that's.
In our regulations, have we said by special permit, you can have a solar farm?
Yes.
Oh, it already says that, okay.
And then it's, there's not much of a discussion.
Yeah, and so to to.
It says that by special permit, then.
To 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 take the discussion to the point where, well, we have to declare one of these primary and the other one accessory accessory, and and well, because the determination is this may be considered accessory, how about jointly used? The the two projects jointly using the property.
That's not how this conversation started, that started out.
Well, no.
Accessory uses, if it started out, you permit both of these, then the answer is simple.
It's it's just not not a, I I looked at this perspective that we shouldn't, we we should have a regulation change of what would otherwise be a permitted use if the winery wasn't there, I was like, ah, come on.
Exactly.
Yeah, because one could eventually, one could start as a secondary and end up becoming the primary, depending on the situation that you put.
Well, well.
But if it says in the regulations that a solar farm is permitted with a special permit.
Yes.
I think that answers the question, are we giving you a regulation change?
I don't think so either, that was my point, and and I do that this was gonna get categorized as.
Can we make a motion to move this forward?
Well, we we're not, there's no motion to be made, because this is a preliminary presentation. The the only perspective, I I just, to get into this analysis of accessory versus is a primary, I, these are two permitted uses for this property. So let them, I would suggest that we be open to let them going on. That said, going back to what the the applicant said about meeting a comfort level, maybe the most prudent thing from your perspective, the applicant's perspective, would be a regulation change so that you have a comfort level, but I don't think we feel a need for a regulation changes there. At your call.
I mean, from our perspective, if the commission feels that a regulation change is not needed, then we wouldn't pursue that, so we would just move forward with a special permit and consider that it's a permitted use, and the commission would review that special permit, and the butters would have the opportunity to comment on it and go through the usual process.
You know, the, at some point, I want common sense to prevail here, but also legal defendability has to prevail. So what what we've come up with as a perspective may appeal to our common sense and may not be legally defendable, but this to me is clearly legally defendable, and I'm not an attorney, but I just, I I respect our town attorney, I just did not agree with his perspective on this in any way whatsoever. And I think ultimately it's up to us to provide the clarification on our regulations to applicants and potential applicants, Don.
As long as it says in the regulations that a solar farm is.
Let's read through it, just a moment, Paula. Kind enough to put that.
Eight dash eight dot fifteen, I think it is, I, yeah, so it's on the the last page there. It's as a primary use, I'm, one of the things that I have said from the beginning is I screwed up in drafting that. Cause I, never occurred to me that there would be, uh, um, a homeowner wanting a large solar farm on their property or a winery wanting a large solar farm on their property. My job is to, to make sure, um, that when you're doing something legally in, in the, by which it's a legal act that you're doing when you're adopting a, a plan or writing regulations, is that we meet, the, our regulations and the law so that you don't end up going to court. And I know Walter is gonna be very happy on December thirty-first when I've retired. Um, my snags have kept us out of court. I'm sick of this, Rick. I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay, but I, I don't think expressing it is appropriate in a meeting.
All right.
Excuse me, and it wasn't appropriate for me to express either, so I apologize.
We don't tend to have us the same standard for members of the public. Um, we give them their latitude to express their feelings. I, I just, there's a certain standard for the commission members and, and.
And staff, and staff. I agree. I agree.
That being said, I, I just don't see any reason why there's a need for a regulation change, but it suggests.
Only for clarification.
Yeah, if, if, you know, if it's not going to slow the project down, because this is still a special permit. Um, I, I would have us do the regulation change on our dime because I think it would be a correction of our regulations. And the idea of clarifying, but for the record, I don't think it's necessary, but I think it would be prudent. And I, I just, I don't want you to pay for a regulation change as the applicant for us to make clarification. And here, our clear intention was to allow ground mounted solar arrays. And we do want them by special permit because we don't wanna take a, a beautiful scenic vista right next to the road and have all kinds of solar panels reflected. I've seen the horror it causes with people when those things occur on otherwise pristine, uh, grassland or farmland. And it, it, it does.
I think the only people that are gonna attack this would be a butters right along with it. I'm not so sure about that, Walt.
Their houses are below it.
So let's, we're not gonna get into that. Don, Paul, we're not gonna get into that tonight. We're not.
Well, I, I had some more, just.
But that, we can get into that as part of the application.
Yeah, no, but I just wanna give them the input that I, it would seem to me that if you're gonna run a three thousand foot three-phase line, which is what you, sounds like you were proposing, up from the winery, it would be easier and probably more cost effective to improve the three-phase line on double A and come out for that circle.
At this point, we haven't proposed it, it's not against it, but, uh, we'd be happy to address butter concerns when we have an actual application in front of the board, uh, in front of the commission. Um, butter concerns, viewsapes are something we work with all the time. I'm very familiar with the need to provide screening if somebody has a direct view or even an indirect view that's substantial enough to.
I, I don't, okay. I don't have any, any lack of, um, confidence that our current regulations were, if, if we're gonna interpret them to take two permitted uses and say, okay, cause you're doing both of them on that one property, one or the other is out. That, that's just not the way I think we're, we're trying to interpret this and look at this. So that being said, I, I, I would be comfortable, but if there's no harm in modifying the regulation to make it crystal clear. Okay, but if, let's say we voted down the regulation change, I think, which I don't know why we would, but we have to keep our minds open because a public hearing would be held on it. Uh, the point is, this is just such a narrow interpretation of our current regulation. Um, that I don't know that we have to go down that path. I'm comfortable that this is something permitted by special permit. Um, so there would be special permit review of this project once presented, and then we can look at it from that perspective. But I just, I don't see any problem. I, I don't feel a need for a modification. If that's a prudent thing, then let's, let's pursue it in parallel, but let's say we voted down a regulation change. I would still think that this would be permitted by special permit under our current view of the regulations.
I, I, I agree with you, but I think if there's an opportunity, this is really just echoing what you said. As we go through these and we find these issues, these are these sticking points where sometimes less is more. We've put too much in. Somebody used the word micromanaging. It allows for micromanaging.
Pretty, I personally, I'm pretty excited about the prospect of that. I, I think it's nothing but a plus and we really appreciate your effort. But we do wanna make sure that everybody's well covered in this, uh, but I don't feel an absolute need. I don't feel a need at all for a regulation change. But, you know, why not? If it's not gonna slow this down, you know, why not?
Yeah, if it doesn't slow the project down, I would like to see a clarification of the regulation.
Yeah, we, we wanna encourage projects like this.
So then a clarify question on it. Would we wait for the regulation change to occur?
I think you do them in parallel, as Paula Stahl indicated. Yeah, so.
And what would your timing be for a regulation change? Cause you have to have both notice and a public hearing.
Be the same, same as a special permit application, so the same timeframe, so they could both start at the same time. And, you know, you're not gonna put any, anything, you're not gonna pursue the, the, the procuring of equipment till you have the approval. So we would, we would have that, uh, the only thing in there would probably, well, you'd have a, a waiting period after a special permit. And the regulation change, I think, has a waiting period before it's implemented.
Fifteen day appeal period, yeah.
Yeah, so they would run in parallel with each other.
The, um, the commission can do it sooner if, cause it's gonna take a while for you get, to get the, um, this, the plans ready for, for submission. We could do it immediately. There's a couple other little housekeeping things to do.
Is everyone in favor of pursuing that?
I, I think you're personally covered because even, even Dee says, even it becomes primary, it can be done with a special permit. So if that overcame the, it became a primary use, that he decided to scale his winery back. At worst, they'd come back and go further.
So I, I think you're covered under our regulations as a, as a use that is allowed by special permit.
But I think we should clean this up.
Well, yeah, well, look, well, yeah, Paul, if you could initiate that, so at the next meeting. We can introduce the regulation change on, as a.
Set a special, special permit, uh, hearing for it. Yes, I will do that.
Take the accessory out of it.
Yeah, we just, we, I, I love seeing this project from purely a principle standpoint. Uh, I'd love, love that we're going this direction as a country.
And the reason I brought this up is so that there would not be a snag in the project as, as they were going along.
Okay.
As this would have caused one, I think.
I have more questions.
Okay.
Deals about the project.
Well, the project, okay.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna know, is it a tracking system?
It is.
Okay, so, but it's a tracking just rotation of the sun.
Right.
It's not asthma for fall to.
Right, it's a single axis tracking. So it moves east to west during the course of the day and then resets at night.
That would be one of my other concerns would be reflection of the houses that are up there.
The way that the panels are designed these days, that they are there to absorb sunlight, they have any anti-glare coating on them. There's really very, very minimal reflections of all of these things.
To me, it would only be important for the people that are right up there along the, along the road.
Understand. That is a common question.
Yeah, okay.
They're a flat panel, so.
The surface of the panel is flat. It's good that once it's mounted on the.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, we would look forward to your application, uh, but stay in touch with, uh, Paula Stahl, our town planner. Uh, uh, with regard to a, a regulation change and we wanna make sure it's crystal clear, um, what our regulation states. But I don't, I don't see any lack of clarity as it currently stands.
One other question. Is there a substation out there?
Uh, there's already a substation along Route eighty-seven.
Yeah, I know that, but.
There's not a substation associated with the project.
How do you, if you're gonna put it into the three-phase lines at thirteen thousand volts, uh.
There would be a, there's a step up. We think a substation is something that decides this room. Uh, so I guess one final question, if we are planning, it'll take us another couple of weeks to get our civil engineering drawings ready before we have a permit application ready. Um, so that puts us in the middle of November, best case scenario, uh, then we've got the holidays and then Paula Stahl's retiring. What is your outlook, uh, in the next year for how these applications are reviewed by staff, uh, and commission meetings moving forward? I don't know if it's as simple as you'll just keep Paula on, uh, for a retainer or, uh, if you're hiring someone else immediately or if you'll just go about and things kind of creep slowly along. That would be the concern.
Okay, sorry.
There was a question.
I, I had something coming in from our zone enforcement office.
We don't have an answer to that right now. They're, they've been looking for, for somebody to, to, uh, take my place. The, um, the back, backup plan, I understand, is that they would, um, use planners from CROG as, on an interim basis, um, until a full, not a full-time, a, um, permanent planner was found. There's not that many folks in my profession anymore. There's, this is getting difficult.
So when we file our application, um, if Paula is not still on staff to review it, will you have a contingency plan for other folks?
Yes, we, yeah, we will definitely have a, they will have a contingency plan, uh, starting January first. Uh, we'll be developing that, definitely. Um, it will not be in limbo and it's, there's, as you know, there's statutes that, once you submit it, they have sixty-five days to hold the hearing and thirty-five to keep the hearing open and then sixty-five to make a decision. So there's, there's time limits that, that they will need to meet. Um, but it's, and I'm be happy to work with you over the next couple of months, uh, fine tuning your plan. Did you decide if you need to, to, uh, go to Wetlands at all?
Uh, I don't believe we have any well and impact on the existing street crossing. Everything else in the parade area.
Okay, and you're not gonna be widening that crossing?
We're not.
Okay, perfect.
Alarm for, from kind of approval to, you know, completion of the project.
So the construction timeline is probably at least six months. Um, usually it takes at least two months from use permit to getting building electrical permits. Um, so we'd be looking at rigging ground probably two months after this board issues an approval at the earliest, unless it's still nowhere. In which case we'd wait until things firm up, um, and then start late spring or the summer.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate the consideration and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tabor, note that he's seated back at the table. Next up is regulation revisions. I do wanna talk about this and I'm gonna try and keep this brief. Um, Justin and I had a subcommittee meeting with, with, uh, we are the subcommittee at this point. We would welcome one other member if we're legally allowed to have a meeting. Uh, I say that tongue in cheek. Couple of things I wanna bring up conceptually. I've never been in favor, and I say never in that, I, whether I voted in favor of adopting the regulation or not. I, I've been conceptually opposed to our open space, um, our conservation requirement, dedication requirement or fee and lieu requirements on subdivisions. I just think it's a developer tax and I, I don't, you know.
Extortion.
Well, I don't wanna put it that way. I just don't feel that that's appropriate when we have a shallow shortage of housing. It just counterproductive.
Well, my question is, when is enough enough with taking this space?
So let me, let's, let's, that's, we're gonna have that conversation, okay? Oh, no, we, we, we certainly are. I just don't feel that that's the right place to, to raise money or obtain land. Um, if it, that's, that's one point. So I would be in favor of potentially, in conjunction with another fairly substantial overhaul of our regulations, our subdivision regulations, eliminating that altogether separately. Um, the idea of conservation subdivisions and Paul, in the meeting Paula explained, uh, the conservation subdivisions are, are, an example is island woods, where they had reduced zoning standards at the time based on the idea that other land could be dedicated for public use, but on an incentivized basis, not on a confiscation basis. So I, I would be in, in, and we, we would need to look at this in, in more depth, but I would be in, and, and, uh, and let me take a side channel here. I think that we can look seriously at opening up our cul-de-sac regulations to allow longer cul-de-sacs and more homes on the cul-de-sac than what we currently allow. The number probably isn't justified by any real, uh, scientific approach to it. With modern roads with wide shelves, the idea that we want, wanna limit the length of cul-de-sacs to a certain length.
Not that. The engineering septic systems are pretty phenomenal.
Yeah, so we, so some of the things that I wanna bring up in the subcommittee are three, let's bring three main points up, but there'll be other points. Number one, uh, examining whether we wanna eliminate the, uh, the requirement for a fee in lieu of or a land dedication as part of a subdivision. Number one. Number two, lengthening cul-de-sacs. And number three, an incentivized approach to not mandating, but giving as an alternative, a developer the right to approach a conservation subdivision with, with lands dedicated for public access or something and reduce road, road frontage and reduce lot, lot, um, bulk and dimension requirements in exchange for, uh, for that, those land dedications. And they may not even be held by the town. It could be wide open grassy fields that are held in common by the members of a subdivision. Keep, I'm not even trying to define that, but the idea is we could also potentially help reduce the cost of housing. Because right now with requirement of two hundred feet of road frontage, except for the occasional rear lot, you need, if, you need, if you have perfect land, you need two, uh, two hundred feet of road for each two lots. It's a hundred feet of road frontage at nearly five hundred dollars a linear foot. Your cost of putting in a road is fifty grand per lot under our current regulations. And it's, the market won't support it. And there's a shortage of really desirable lots in the market, but the market won't support it. And I think everything we can do to help take some of the horrible impact of the, the price gouging that's going on in the building market so that it's affordable for people to build homes is a service that would do to the community. So I would look for a way to say, okay, on this subdivision, you would have gotten seventeen lots, but now you can get twenty-two lots and have a lesser road building cost because of an alternative approach. If the developer wants to pursue it, not mandate dual planning, but give them an incentive. And so that's the direction that we're going. Uh, Justin and I, I think we have a very unified perspective on that. I'd like to get some feedback from the commission because I don't wanna operate independent of the thought processes of the commission as we approach these things. And we'll come back to you with firmed up concepts before we even start to write the, the finished regulations. Paul has done some work on, on the regulations. I plan to get together, uh, for another subcommittee meeting and try to consistently get together every couple of weeks or so, so that we're constantly working toward this end. So any thoughts on this from the commission?
You gonna simplify the wording, it's kind of in English?
Yeah, that, that would always be a goal. Yeah, yeah.
In layman's terms.
Yeah, good points.
Yep.
Any, any perspective?
Rick, it's Tom. When, when did you change that to the two hundred feet?
Uh, I'm thinking about thirty years ago. I remember it when it was one hundred and fifty.
It's over forty because I've got two hundred and that was nineteen sixty-eight.
Okay, that when they. I, I do, I, cause I see lots. I, I could have sworn that we increased it to two hundred feet. Early nineties, yeah. So it might have gone from, uh, one fifty to two hundred and then back to one fifty and then back to two hundred. We were two acres owning at one point, then we were, I think we were one acre.
Subdivided, my frontage is two hundred feet, so I assumed in sixty-four that was the regulation.
I, I don't, can't say that, but, but we, we've been all over the map as, as, um, septic technology increased. We went from two acres down to fifty thousand with thirty thousand contiguous usable, um, square feet. Um, we've been all over the place on that because the science has changed over time and the, the perspective about development. But I think the time to allow, allow, um, fully sustainable lots that are slightly smaller is, the time is here to at least have the discussion about it, whether we go down that path. That are slightly smaller is the time is here to at least have the discussion about it, whether we go down that path like. I, there, there, there's some really beautiful concepts for development that I don't want to see Columbia miss out on because we just don't. Our regulations just don't encompass that concept.
Yeah, I think, I, I've always felt the two hundred was exorbitant. I, I'm not even sure that the, the, the one fifty isn't doing much, but that's my opinion.
It may be, you know, maybe another number. I don't have any firm perspective. I, I think we should, that should be driven by the science of, of um, septic systems. Yeah, a, a, a pure scientific analysis and then we start with that and, and work out from there, then go from there. No, there's, there's a lot of things to consider. So that's kind of the direction we're going. I don't, just don't want to work in the dark here. I want to work. So you know what we're discussing. We'll work on it, but I want the feedback back and we'd love another member of the commission to be on the subcommittee. Uh, but we really plan to work and get this done. Where, you know, I think the next session, we want to sit down with a pencil and paper and a, a red pens. And start writing, writing things, we don't feel a need for this and we'll make some lines out and. And write other things. And there's a, a template that Paula has, has initiated some, quite a bit of work on. So we, that's what we plan to do.
Are you looking for somebody tonight to join us?
Uh, whenever you're ready. No, we're gonna try and meet once every couple of weeks, probably on a Thursday or something when Paula's in. All we still have are here and I don't want to rush the process, but I don't want to, I, I'm serious about moving the process forward.
So something we can read now?
Uh, nothing. I would want to mark it up more and change it more before we come back to the commission. I just wanted to discuss those three broad concepts.
We should go home, look at our regulations, make our own notes and say if it's worth.
I would welcome that, you know.
Interested in sitting this up, Chris.
Okay, so Mr. Tabor, so Paul, can we have more than three on a subcommittee?
No, then you're having a, having a meeting.
We're having a meeting, so you're it.
There are been towns that explored um, reduced lot sizes and frontages for community water systems. Soil qualities. I, I think I even have those pilot regulations from decades ago.
I, I want to lead the charge into the future. I don't want to fall behind it. I want to do. I want to do what's right for the community in, in terms of, in terms of, how do we make this more simple? I don't want to mandate this other analysis of property, but I do want it as an option. And I want the, the incentive to be enough that it's irresistible for a developer to not pursue that analysis unless it's a marginal property.
Just a town person that wants to subdivide his property so his kid can live on it. And there's a lot of options. It's not just developers. There's people who have land and things. We had a couple of properties come across us.
Well, there's gonna be a lot of discussion of this, there.
Farm that wanted to sell a little chunk. Remember they wanted to take a whole bunch of acreage because. They only wanted to take a couple of acres off of it, but then they wanted that, that open space equivalent based on the whole land. Yeah, I mean, that's crazy.
Well, there's, there's other layers to that too. The idea that we have regulations that incentivize. Um, taking frontage lots and leaving rear lots unplantable for the future.
Yeah, but there was plenty, a plenty, I'm just.
I understand. So those are things that, that we will work on.
I mean, the action I come across that they give up all the land right off the bat and they never have to do it again.
Uh, yeah, so that, that's a process that, that we'll work on it as subcommittee will be reporting back to you. After every meeting, we'll have something to say here. Um, I'm gonna move on if everyone's okay. Uh, communications and reports.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Paul.
Uh, you usually just speed on to the next line, so I just want to sneak in here. Uh, we have uh, some upcoming meetings that I wanted to talk to you about. Um, our next meeting is November fourteenth. We have two public hearings. Uh, we have wild motors coming in. It's um. Um, they're not doing a lot, but they happen to be in a flood zone. Um, was the, the flood level there technically is four feet, so it, it's a tough spot. Um, it's, they're not doing much to the building, uh, but they still need to come uh, with a public hearing. Uh, format, and that's on the November fourteenth. Also on the fourteenth, uh, we have a public hearing. Uh, has been resubmitted to repeal section fifty two dot seven dot five, which is the uh, event wedding venue. Um, regulation. So we have those two public hearings on the, on November fourteenth. Uh, later this week, uh, I'm expecting a, an application to come in. Um, for. Which also would be public hearing. It's the uh, the wedding venue. Um, it is being resubmitted in a, in a different format. I've not seen it. I've not talked to them about exactly what their new proposal is. Um, but the um, um, I mean anticipating it. Sometime this week, they were trying to get it in for last week so that would be received as of tonight. Um, which is the statute time, the um. The next time we, I'm not sure when we would want to have public hearings on that. Um, well, so I just wanted to have you start thinking about. Um, we've got Christmas coming up, the first public hearing date in December, December. Could be December twelfth for that, for the wedding venue. Our second meeting in December falls on a Tuesday because uh, a Monday is a, is a legal holiday. So it's a Tuesday meeting, but it's right in the middle of the holidays and you have until. Um, the middle of January to open a public hearing in terms of statutory limits, so you may want to do that.
Um, barring any other developments, I'd push for the twelve twelve for that public hearing because.
Okay.
Good chance our, our Tuesday meeting will be canceled.
Cancelled, that's, it's right between Christmas and New Year, so I, I would assume.
Very little chance that's gonna go on unless we have.
Right, right.
Okay.
And were you wondering whether those public hearings should be in yeoman's or in here?
Well, the public hearing for the, especially for the wedding venue.
Yeah, I would think uh, our next meeting wo- would almost certainly need to be in yeoman's if we can get it. Uh, because there will be a fair number of attendees likely.
Yeah.
Okay, the same with the twelve twelve one.
Okay, so that the fourth, the next month on the fourteenth, you, you'd like it in, in.
And if we want to keep it a hybrid meeting, I can certainly check with Jen about moving the camera and the equipment into.
Okay.
Yeah, they've, they've not, yeah, they've not done that yet, but we can figure that one out.
If it's difficult, then it just won't be a hybrid meeting, okay?
Right.
If anyone feels that's a problem, let me know personally and we'll work around whatever needs our commission members have. Okay? Okay, next, uh, is that everything you have, Paula?
Yes, that is.
George, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is open discussion, I. I want to bring up the um, enforcement, what uh, discussions we've been having. Justin, I, I really appreciate that you helped keep this at the forefront of my mind. So I had a conversation with uh, Connie Kissler today and. She said, Rick, um, I've been working forty hours several of the last weeks when I'm only. Supposed to be working nineteen or twenty hours a week with so many permitting and permitting review issues. She was apologetic. I said, but, and I said, this is what I said to her. I'll tell you, there's no secret here. I said, okay, what I'm looking for from you is, she was going to send me a list of a past enforcement, enforcement. Um, procedural overview that we had on in print. She said that she emailed it to me. I, I couldn't find it. She's gonna email that to me again and I'll get it out to all of you. It's not something that's proposed, but might be a working copy to work from. And so I didn't push her on it. She said. I'm called a zoning enforcement officer, but really what I am, I'm, and I said, well, really you're the zoning review and enforcement officer. Because the biggest part of her job, ninety percent of her job, is review of app, applications that come in that are very time consuming. She said, I just don't have enough time in my. Process to, and she didn't use that word, that's my word, uh, to. Attend to all of the administrative functions and enforcement, and that's why enforcement, I've been. Slow to respond to certain things. So I listened and I accepted and. You know, we, we would like to see things done a little differently, but as a person, I don't question her. She's a really sincere. Really dedicated, hardworking person. Don't question that in any way, but I did say to her. What I need from you, and she just emailed it to me this evening, we'd like to see the spreadsheet consistently once a month. With the outstanding zoning actions. I don't want you want to review that because I don't have it out to all of you. We'll have that. Well, yeah, so, but I was just explaining why we don't get it. So that being said, I said, keep a spreadsheet with all of the information you want to share with us in the main columns and the stuff that. That you don't feel is appropriate to share, uh, you know, detailed notes that you have put in the far right hand column and just send us the columns. With the information. We just want to see what you're dealing with on an ongoing basis. So she agreed that she would do that. I said, once a month, I want to see it so that we get to review it once a month. And maybe we don't need to do it that often if it's not changing, but that's kind of where we sat with it.
I think what that could do is, if we see something that you think should be higher priority, we can have her bump it up, you know, you should almost have. Uh, enforcement priority levels depending on what it is. There's sewage dumping out somewhere, that's gonna be on super high priorities.
Well, that doesn't tend, usually a zoning issue. That, that tends more.
They're doing something along those lines.
You know, mostly those would be civil issues, but.
But you know what I'm trying to say?
I do, I know.
You know, we can, you can spot check for it.
I, well, the, the, the premise for us seeing the enforcement report is so that we, we, we have some more guidance. As to where we need to go with regulation. That's the concept. And I, I don't want, I'm gonna be pushing her a little harder to get that to me. But the other thing, I, there was a, a document with an overview of the procedure for enforcement. You know, a letter, a letter and so on and uh, based on that, but based on uh. Having a, at least some process in place that is a guideline for her to follow, giving her some discretion, but really saying. You know, people need to get a written letter twice before you escalate it and it should be done within this certain timeframe. So I, I, I'll get that from her. Uh, she indicated that she had emailed that I didn't see it in my. Email, email trail, but I do have a spam folder that is very large.
Did we stop getting that because she was overworked?
Getting what?
Getting the reports because we used to get them at every meeting.
Yes, we did.
We should stop doing because she was too much work.
There's too much, there's too much. And so it gets me, you know, I don't even want to get into the issue of. What, what, what is the level of review that's appropriate? Um, because I've constantly taken the perspective, it, you know, it's not the job of our zoning enforcement officer to. Come up with a development plan on projects and, and, and manage a development project for somebody. It's their job to review it once it's complete. And if, you know, that's another whole issue that. That, that I'm not gonna get into tonight if you don't mind. But we want to make the process easy for the public. And easier for our zoning enforcement officer. And, you know, there's, there's the other practical matter and I'll say it publicly and I, maybe I shouldn't. Is our zoning regulations are in, in, in essence, unless somebody is compliant are very hard to enforce because. It's been proven in the past that um, getting somebody to comply that doesn't want to is very difficult. If we, we only have the prospect of holding out on a certificate of occupancy, um, on non, non CO things. Um, if somebody is, is in violation, the cost to getting them to comply. Far out, out, you know, outweigh, exceeds the cost or the, the, the fines that we can generate. So there, there's some issues there, but let's, for now, we want to be aware of the zoning infractions that are out there that she's pursuing. And then we um. We want to, some sort of overview, oversight of, of the process that she has in place. So, well, I just wanted to address this. Give me more time. Hopefully, if not at the next meeting, which is a public hearing. It'll be the one, the meeting after that, that maybe we can get into some more detail about this. This has been a long, ongoing problem. We're not gonna solve it in the next thirty days. Okay, thoughts, questions? Okay, it's, it's in the front of my mind. And I, I don't question her sincerity. She's, she's very hardworking and, and very dedicated. That's it. Anything other insubstances, anyone from the public would like to bring up to us?
I think Ann Donick might have had her hand up at one point.
And you can wave your hands, we'll know you wanted to say something.
No.
Okay. All right, uh, no executive session, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. We have to, it has to be a pending legal matter. Yeah, we, we just can't have off the record discussions.
Okay.
Yeah, dude, yeah.
I know that one's a lot.
Okay, so, you know, yeah, I, I tried to do that a while ago. Can't do that. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Need a second? All those in favor? That appeared. Okay, thank you, everybody. You can stop recording and turn off.